Alright, social media and my virtual classroom, I am back, I am back, praise the Lord, thank you, hallelujah, hallelujah, what an awesome God we serve, this is definitely the day that the Lord has made, I will and you will rejoice and be glad, and thank you for those that take the time out to view our recordings here. I am for those that don't know me, I am Pastor Teresa Vini, one of the administrators here at Soldiers on Fire for Christ, and your Bible study instructor for tonight. Oh Lord, it's early night, so you know Pastor God a word, and I truly hope that the word will definitely edify you and you will be applicable with the word, you will apply it, don't just hear the word, family, do what it says if it affects any area of your life. You know, you'll never know until you take that step with God to see how wonderful you truly are, how wonderful He truly is, and the impact that it can have to really change your life, amen. So I hope that the word through my Bible study topic tonight will help someone out there that may view this recording later, someone in the virtual classroom, amen. But first, as always, you know how I want y'all to do, because some of you been hustling and bustling, ripping and running up and down the street today, doing some stuff, and then some of you are going through out there with some things. So I'm gonna open the platform up with a one worship song, and I am going to, I'm gonna open with one worship song, and then I'm gonna open up with prayer. May give us some announcements, because some of you should know by now, if you've been trying to login and contact us and following us, that we do have some activities that God is using us through as our men and women's panel discussion, Bible study sessions, we have prayer every week, Bible study every week. We are partnered with St. Jude to raise a million dollars, and so we're gonna keep on advertising these things, because God said so. And so these are areas across the earth and things that God needs to do, and He wants to do them through His people that have truly received the calling on their life to help serve and pray for others, amen. So with all that being said, I'm going to open us up with a worship, I want you to clear your hearts and minds as always. Shake off the world, shake off you, because sometimes yourself can get in the way from hearing and listening to the word of God. And I need you to get into the spirit realm with me, so you can listen to the word, however God used me, and hopefully it will edify and strengthen, and you will start growing spiritually upright, amen. I do not own any rights to any music, anything that will be coming forth, I do not own any rights to any music, songs that will be coming forth, I'm gonna say it again, I do not own any rights to any music, anything that will come forth, hallelujah, one for the Father, for the Son, and the Holy Spirit. We don't own any rights to any musical songs that we play, but we thank God for the vessels that God used them for their talents, and listen to the words of the music, and relax, open your spirit up, put your ears to God's lips, and thank you in advance for those of you that will watch this recording later and share with others. Please share, hopefully something that was said that will help somebody that you know that's in need. Even though if they may not receive from you or listen to you, still be, you know, grateful that there is someone out there that God will use to help you or your family members or friends or husbands and wives or whomever, neighbors, amen. So, hold that, because I'm, everybody got decrease, so that he will increase. Enjoy the worship song, one of my favorites now, I set it up. Words are powerful, y'all need to start listening to words from people, songs from everywhere, words are powerful. Hallelujah. And for those of you coming in, please meet your mics. Yes. Only you know, God. Thank you, Lord. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. More and more like you, oh Lord. Blessing me, oh Lord, so you can be seen at all times. Here I am. Here I am. Here I am, oh Lord. Here I am. Here I am. Just as I am. Just as I am. Just as I am. Just as I am. Oh, I'm here for you right now, Lord. Speak to my heart right now. Speak to my mind, Lord. Oh, yeah. I stand before you unashamed. I stand before you unrestrained. I stand before you unashamed. I stand before you unrestrained. Here I am. Here I am, oh Lord. God, here I am. Lord, here I am. Take me love. Please take me love. Please take me love. Receive my praise. Receive my worship. Receive my praise. Oh, I give it to you, Lord, I give it to you, Lord. Where would I be? You won't, you know. God, I'm glad you see. Through eyes of love. Cause I'm a hopeless case. An empty place. I'm a hopeless case. An empty place. I'm a hopeless case. An empty place. Thank God for grace. Hallelujah, 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 thank God for grace. Thank God for grace, hold it right there, sometimes just thank God for grace. All of us are undeserving of His love, His grace, and His mercy. But we thank God for grace. We praise you and we thank you. Oh Lord, I come to you now with my Soldiers on Fire for Christ family and social media family right now, thanking you for grace, thanking you for mercy, thanking you for your love, thanking you for your faithfulness, you consistently give to a world of people that is so undeserving. We come and we thank you for our eyes, we thank you for our ears, we thank you for our mouth, we thank you for our vessels, we thank you for our intellect. Some of us didn't wake up in our right state of mind today, some people didn't wake up at all. So we have to take a moment now to say, thank you, we appreciate you, we honor you that you still are willing to give us grace, to give us mercy, to give us love, and to give us faithfulness. Where would we be? We are so glad that you look at us through the eyes of love because of what Jesus did on Calvary. For if He didn't do that, you couldn't look at us through the eyes of love. You would be looking at us through the eyes of anger, I know, and you'll be ready to wipe us out, because you cannot get close to sin, holiness and sin don't mix. And you said that the wages of sin is death. But what an awesome God that you are, because you wish for none of us to perish. So we welcome you, and you know that you are always welcome in Soldiers on Fire for Christ, because it was made by you for you. So we welcome you again to your platform, have a seat, Lord God, so that we can enter into your presence on this virtual platform. And for those that may listen to this recording later, Lord, go into, Holy Spirit, I want you to go into the homes behind the scenes, and hopefully however, Lord God, you use me to help be an encouragement and a blessing to your people, that they will really consider having a relationship with you and make decisions that will be pleasing unto you and not pleasing unto man in the name of Jesus. So Lord, I decrease, so you can increase. But most importantly, Lord, forgive all of us for our sins, sins that are known and unknown. And we thank you, and I turn over my mouth unto you, and let the words of my mouth and the meditations of my heart be acceptable in your sight, for you are my strength and my redeemer, and it's all about you, have your way, in Jesus mighty and awesome name, and everyone say amen, 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 and it is done, hallelujah.
Amen.
This place, where would I be? I'm so glad He looked at us through the eyes of love, because some of us do things and we deliberately sin, and He still looks at us through the eyes of love, now explain that, when we are so undeserving. Just think about that, we are so undeserving, and He still looks down on us through the eyes of love, which He has a right to look at some of us, and I'm talking to His people, I ain't even talking to the world. His people, some of us deserve to be punished, some of us deserve the penalty for the deliberate sin, but instead He still looks at you through the eyes of love, because His love never fails, it never gives up, and it will never run out on you, amen. Alright, family, get your bibles, time to go to work and work the word. Get your devices out, bibles, all that good stuff, social media out there, this is for you, you know, follow along. Amen, we're coming from the book of John. Hallelujah, we are in the book of John tonight. Those of you out there, again, I'm Pastor Teresa Vini, one of the administrators at Soldiers on Fire for Christ, and your Bible study instructor for tonight, amen. I kinda gave a little bit of the announcements for us here at Soldiers through my introduction, but just a reminder that we will be having, so at Soldiers on Fire for Christ here, we always have prayer on Thursday at 7:00 PM Eastern Standard Time next week. Elder Marshall Jenkins will be your prayer call facilitator, and guess what, I'm gonna be back again, hallelujah, on Friday to be your Bible study instructor. And then Saturday, we won't have Bible study, because it will be the men's panel discussion. So men, I implore you out there, if you would like to sit in with Elder Marshall and Minister Isaiah Brother Bud, and all the other men that may come in and join, so that y'all can sit at the feet of God and hear what He has to say, so that you can be excellent, effective men and as well as leaders, because that's what you were originally created to do as well, to take care of yourselves and your family, and have that supernatural thinking, so that you can lead and they will follow, amen. And get some encouragement to build your encouragement up for yourself. Some of you brothers need to love yourself rightly, you're not loving yourself rightly, that's why you can't love your mate. Or if you're single, you're not, God ain't released you to choose a woman yet, because you're not loving you right first. Even though, yes, man is not made to be alone, not just men, but women, one man, we're not made to be alone. But some of you have chosen to be alone, and we get, and that's a choice, but at the same time, it's not meant for you to be alone. And if in your season, if God sends you a mate, a traveling partner, whatever you wanna call it, you understand? Just make sure you just keep God involved. But if you're not ready for that, it's because some of you need to work on you loving you better before you can extend to love others. Some of you got this right, but you ain't got this right, and that's okay, because we all have different, we all grow at different paces, but anyway, come out and join the men on, let me see, I think what, the Thursday is the 20th? And I'm on the, was that the wrong date? Let me see real quick, okay, yeah, next Thursday is the 21st.
So 23rd the men's.
Yes, 23rd, that Saturday is the men's panel.
Yeah. One noon.
At 12 noon, so please, the men out there and those that will view this later, if you wanna join them, all you have to do is look them up on Facebook and inbox them your email address. How simple is that? Don't let a button come between you and God, I know times are changing, and there are a lot of things that's not going back the way it used to be. Y'all might as well get that up in your mind, because you see that through life itself. Most sure, there are not many churches up, a lot of them shut down. Y'all better pay attention to why God did that, how He used the COVID, y'all better pay attention. And guess what, there's something else to come, not to scare you, but to prepare you, amen. So you won't be caught off guard, because some of you, y'all, y'all sleeping. And then, again, if you wanna also join us for those events that are coming up, but also we are partnered with St. Jude, and we are partnered with St. Jude to raise a million dollars to help the children and their families, as these children are battling childhood diseases and diseases that, guess what? Some of you haven't been fortunate to have, but you should have a heart to wanna help a child. And see, sometimes, especially, I'm talking to believers now, if some of you don't have a heart to help a child, why should God help you? And you are His child. Think about it. Some of you sit in prayer and you're begging God, you need, you wanna talking to God about doing this and doing that, but you won't even help a child in the natural, but you expect God to help you, and you're a child of God. And I'm not saying this to make you feel bad or anything, because I want you to talk to God first before you partner with us, because I don't want you to give grudgingly, because I'm, you know, I have a lot of God's trade, I wanna cheerful giver, I want you to, I wanna cheerful partner. I want you to come with your little money, the minimum is $5. And when you click on the link, you can hit other and donate however much you want, as many times as you want. Remember, our goal is a million dollars, we're not there yet, but we're gonna get there, I don't care how long it takes, because these children and these families need help, and you need to think about, what if it was you? Every penny, every penny, and a million dollars is nothing, is nothing in the spirit realm, it's nothing. This is about, this is about the intent of your heart, which you are willing to share, that's what God looking at. If you can't even share with the least of the people, and those are the babies, then why should God share His blessings with you? Something to think about, amen. So please, if you, if you do feel spirit led, to join us to meet this goal and to be partnered with St. Jude, you can click on any of our pages, look us up on Facebook. Some of us have Facebook, Instagram, and TikTok pages, but we're mainly on Facebook most of the time. You can go on my page, Pastor Teresa Vini, Apostle Robin Riley, Elder Marshall Jenkins, Brother Bud Dillon, Minister Rose Christine Jackson, Minister Isaiah Robertson, and Minister Von Sata Simmons page, and you can find that link. It's all a push of a button, and let's see if you do really hear from God to give, because you sure, money y'all sure have y'all hands out to receive, though. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, amen. Alright, it's time to go to work, now for that, because God is ready, I am ready, Father. So we're in the book of John, chapter three. I'm gonna read it in the Amplified Version, we're gonna work out of one scripture tonight, John, chapter three, verse 20. Say amen, virtual class, if you're ready, say hold up, if you need time to turn your pages or get your devices.
Amen.
Alright, John, chapter three, verse 20, the Amplified Version says, "For every, for every wrongdoer hates the light. For every wrongdoer hates the light and does not come to the light, but shrinks from it, for fear that his sinful worthless activities will be exposed and condemned." We're gonna get a lot out of that tonight, I'm gonna hit that again for y'all out there, social media, those that are tuning and listen to, listen to this recording later. We are coming from, I'm coming from tonight, from the book of John, and I'm gonna give you my topic in a few seconds. We're in the book of John, chapter three, verse 20, Amplified Version says, "For every wrongdoer hates the light and does not come to the light, but shrinks from it, for fear that his sinful worthless activities will be exposed." Our class topic is tonight, why are my people who are called by my name afraid of being exposed, part three? Why are my people who are called by my name afraid, afraid of being exposed? And some of y'all, when y'all hear that, y'all think of exposure as God is trying, will make a fool out of you and wanna expose your faults. No. Sometimes he wanna, he just wanna show the, what he created, the goodness, the whole, your rights, and some of you don't even want people to see the goodness of the Lord in you, why? See, you need to ask yourself that. Let me put this into your hearing, throughout the book of John, God graphs leaders and believers into Jesus, so that they might draw their strength and nourishment from Christ Himself. No leader or believer is an island. If we are to accomplish a divine mission, we must draw upon a divine power. God sustains and directs us as we lead. Look at the word study for light and dark. In, in the reference to our key scripture, light is a title given to Jesus, like bread of life and the good shepherd. These show us truths about Christ, about our needs and nature, and about Christ's relationship to the world. He is the light, meaning His truth is beams shining upon everything to reveal what is right and what is wrong. Amen, there is no gray area and nothing can be hidden from Him. I'm gonna help you, I'm gonna say that again, because some of y'all really think that y'all do those things behind closed doors, even though man can't see, but God see. There is no, there is no gray and nothing can be hidden from Him. He is willing to open the eyes of and lead anyone who comes to Him. People have one of two reactions when they see the light. Number one is they will hide and run. The love, they love doing sin and are scared that it will be shown. Therefore, they hate the light and want it to go away, so that they can feel comfortable in their sinful lifestyle. The second kind of person is the believer, who is saved by God and wants to live a truthful and righteous life. This kind of person will be attracted by Christ. He is not scared of having his deeds shown out, because he is living for Jesus and they are godly. Uh-oh, I say that all the time, let me say that last sentence again. He is not scared of having his deeds shown, because he is living for Jesus and they are godly. Need to ask yourself, is some of your deeds godly or worldly? Are they good deeds or God deeds? Because see, some of y'all think when y'all do a good thing, that God is pleased with all good things. I don't think so, He's pleased when it's obedient and it's His thing, it's His deed. Because when you look at the heart, you're only doing it for attention. So what type of attention you're trying to draw? Amen. Here's some points to ponder, I got three points I want y'all to ponder on. Here's some points to ponder. I got three points I want y'all to ponder on. Number one. A prerequisite to entering God's kingdom is to be born again. This can only come about the repentance and cleansing work of the Spirit. No good deeds or earthly acts, as great as they may be, can save us. Someone who is born again mu- must evidence this by a new life. So they should be showing the light if they are truly born again. Number two, true love will motivate us to act. God wasn't indifferent and he didn't just love the world a little. He so loved the world that he gave. True love is a giving love, not a taking love, or love. It is others centered and outward reaching. Reach out to the people around them to give them from the best that you have. See, the outreach for Saint Jude does a lot. From just what it says, true love is a giving love. Not a taking love. See, some of y'all go talk to God like that and always want to take, 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 because you want God to give, 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 but you don't even give, give, give. And be available for him to use you. So why are my people who are called by my name afraid of being exposed? Class topic, amen. Let us sit for a bit. Last point to ponder. Is many people live in darkness and in fear of being found out about something. Others have a free conscience and can be joyful because they live in the light of God. Which group are you in? Don't answer that yet, because I don't want y'all get beat up. And that's real talk, even out there, social media. Which group are you in? Confess any dark areas and turn to God. Uh, for, for his light. Are you man or woman enough to confess your sins and turn to God? Y'all could put on an act in front of us, us humans, all day long and twice on Sundays. But you know your actions tell on yourself and your mouth do too. Some of you don't realize what you say. When you get around certain people or get in certain atmospheres. Some of you can really put on an act. Especially at your jobs, at the doctor's office, y'all can put on that good face. That good mask. Then when you get home, that's when you take the mask off, because nobody see you. And all that ugliness under the mask, the spirit of lying, the spirit of pretending. The spirit of selfishness, the spirit of greed. The spirit of just being, you, you, you have a nasty attitude, all of that shows when the masks come off, but that's why some of you. Have mastered art of making sure that mask don't drop off in front of people. But you forget that God has spiritual children, we can see right through it. Amen. Minister Rose?
It's ironic that, uh, this morning, my morning devotion was talking about, um. Being that, uh. That there's nothing under the, the earth that any creature that exists is concealed from God. And, um, it came from Hebrews, the fourth chapter, the thirteenth verse, and it says. And not a creature exists that is concealed from his sight. But all things are open and exposed and revealed to the eyes of him with whom he has to give account. Uh, I don't care how you do it. How, uh, or what you do. If it's not pleasing in God's sight, I don't care how you dress it up. And, and try to hide it. It's not gonna work, because God knows and he sees. And it is, it is funny, because a young lady, when I had shared my, um, the devotion, she was saying something about. There was nothing that she had done once she came in Christ that she was ashamed to do in front of, uh, 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 of God, and I said. Well, that's wonderful if you had that testimony, because I don't have that testimony. And I don't care who, what you say, because we yet in this flesh. There's something you did, I don't care. Uh. Who you are, you may be a pastor's child, a pastor yourself, or, but it's something I'm quite sure you shame. Uh, for, you know, that you have done, because we yet, like you say, we in this flesh suit. Long as we in this flesh suit, there's something, because I don't, I don't claim to know anything, uh, and everything. I only know what God gives me to know, and sometimes we act out of what we know. And not, uh, what, you know, the word of God says.
Mm-hmm, the truth for the.
We don't, that's it, we don't act out of truth. And, 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 and a lot of times, I know myself. I have said something, I have to come back and correct. And I'll be shamed that I said, so I'm not gonna sit here and tell nobody that I, there's, you know. Nothing, because God gonna convict me anyway. That's why there's nothing. There's that, you know, there's nothing exposed to, you know, that's not exposed to God. And people think that they're just because. They don't want, you know, their pastor or their fellow church members to know what they're doing. It's okay, long as nobody find out. No, I tell people all the time, God sits high and he looks low and he see everything you do. So, and then, and I guarantee you, if you know anything about God, he gonna put some kind of conviction on your heart. But it's you that choose to, um. To accept the conviction and, and, and ask God for forgiveness, so, you know, it's, it's kind of hard, it's. For me to sit here, I don't know about nobody else to say that it's not anything that I have ever done. You know, in my walk of Christ, that I'm not ashamed of doing before God, but yes, because I'm yet in the human flesh, but I do know I have to repent. And ask God for forgiveness right away, because if you don't let, ask God for forgiveness right away, you gonna let that thing fester, it's gonna grow. Just like that, uh, they talk about that yeast, that lemon. It's gonna grow, it's gonna get bigger and bigger. So, I, I'm just saying that, you know, there's nothing that God don't see. Okay, man may not see with his natural eye, but a lot of times God will let somebody know. To give you a word, to let, because I think about all the time, David, was that David and Nathana? I believe that he came, he gave them word, told them about, about somebody stealing. The one little lonely sheep the person had, and you got a whole lot of them. So even though you thought you did, this is a secret. God knew about it and he put it on somebody's heart, so there's nothing that's on this earth. It says, and not a creature exists that is concealed from his sight. So, you know, all things are exposed to God. I'm done, I think I said too much.
Amen. Brother Bud and then Minister Isaiah? Come off of me.
Praise God, got it, I'm working on it. Anyway, you know, it's like I said, the Bible says that, oh, if man says. If, if a man says he has no sin, he's a liar. Because only God is true, only God is real. So we need him every moment of the day, every moment of the hour. And to realize that we think we can just do this thing ourselves, without God's help, we fall short. And then we wonder why we fell in the quicksand and can't get out, you know? And we keep struggling, the more you struggle in quicksand, the quicker you're gonna go under, under in the sand. So, you know, God given us a way, he said that if you confess your sins. My heavenly Father is faithful to can, can, to forgive you of your sin. And also cleanse you, which is a process, until the day we come to face to face. It's a process that every day we ask God to help us. In our weakness, help us for the things that are in our heart. God, that we're weak, we need you, and Lord, we gotta depend on you, Father. And you said to cleanse us from all unrighteousness. So it's not just forgiving us our sins for asking, but it's cleansing us. From the process of all unrighteousness, not some, but all unrighteousness. But we gotta come to the Father and say, Lord, yes, this is in me. You know, sometimes we, you know, we struggle with things and says, you have not, because you asked not. And the thing is, when we do ask God, he says, if you don't be, you know, don't hide it. You know, Adam hid his sin by fig leaves, but God said that ain't gonna work, because I already know everything. And then I think there's a scripture that says, even when the sparrow falls from the tree. God is aware of that. Praise God.
Praise God. Minister Isaiah?
Amen, amen. You know, when we speak about not being exposed. Even us in, in faith, sometimes we love God, but we intimidated by what the world knew about our past. So we, we don't give all, we can't give to God, because we're afraid of that. But God already see all, know all, and he's a very forgiving God. That's tend to hold us back as Christians sometimes, because we're afraid of that. But in our growth, it comes a point in your life where you don't care what nobody say. Or what anybody think, because that's your past life. Our Lord and Savior buried that life from. So from getting from the, afraid of being exposed to accepting what people say. It's hard with some people, but you, you finally get to a broker, God already knows what you done did, what you done said, so we shouldn't be afraid of the flesh. What the flesh think. But, but that, but it's hard, it's a process, but that's usually be the problem. So we gotta get from that point where we afraid of being exposed, because people know your past and your history. Because you got people changing life, there were murderers, there was prostitutes, there was pimps, and they, they changed, but you can't, you can't allow, they can't allow that to hold them back in life. Once they get their life to God, because God is your final judge. That's why we gotta stay in a penitentiary with these things. But, but far afraid of being exposed by the world, you gotta tell them you found Jesus now. I don't care what you say about, I don't care what you know about me. You know, because you got Jesus who's my protector, so he cleansed all that away. So if you want to deal with the things I did in my past life, you know, and let that eat you up. Enjoy it, feed on it, but I'm not gonna live in that world no more. They ain't gonna care what you say about it. Amen.
Amen. Back to you, Brother Bud, before I move on.
Yes, you know, sometimes I think that we're afraid to face ourselves, because we're not. Sometimes we're not what we say we are.
There you go. Whoop, dead ass. Whoop, dead ass, social media, right there at the heart of it. I was waiting for somebody to say.
Praise God, it's just the truth. You know, we sat there and we, we know that we should be where we should be, but we're not. So we, that's where the mask comes in, because we're afraid of people, of what they're gonna think of us. You should have been a Christian for all these years, and you're still doing things like that, or you're still talking like that, or you're still acting like that.
And he got the tiger by the tail now. Go ahead, Brother Bud.
But that's the truth, you know, that's what stops us in the flesh sometimes, I believe. Because we know that we're not there and we keep struggling to get where we should be. But we just fail miserably. That's why we need Christ all the time that we can count on him. When we wake up in the morning and say, God, I need you. Lord, you're the vine and I'm the branch. And without you, God, I can't do this right. I can't.
Some of y'all out there, social media, I know that hurt, because it's the truth. You gonna be alright, the truth hurts, but hold on to it, because it'll set you free. It'll set you free. Some of y'all just don't, just don't want, is, just don't want to do right. And then some of you keep on trying to fight it in your flesh. You know you wrong. And they're still trying to correct yourself in the flesh when you need to ask God to help you. Amen. Elder Marshall, then Apostle Robin?
God bless. I like when, uh, you mentioned pastor about teacher. About exposing not just the bad, but the good. How people get intimidated. Once God exposed the gift. That he has put up on us, on the people who are really following him. People get intimidated. By that gift. Once God exposed the gift and the talent. That he has created an individual to become. People get real intimidated and they then they get angry, then they get jealous, then they want to put up a stumbling block. Because of that exposure. They never thought that person could have that much talent and give within themselves. Until God exposed it, then once he exposed it. People want to have, have a tendency to want to. Stop that process. And the enemy will use any kind of weapon, any kind of form of weapon, whatever the, the enemy can use to stop that process. That just laid on my spirit, because everybody focused on the bad. But when God exposed something on the good in the individual. You see, I think people just like, I, that can't be that person. That person was, was doing this and this and this, but God has exposed that gift and talent. So what I'm just trying to say to the class and those who are gonna watch. Don't, don't be surprised when God exposed your gift and people start getting imitated, in, uh, uh. Irritated by what God has exposed, amen, imitated, thank you all in spirit.
They gonna be irritated, irritated, just mad. And you know what? Like he said, social media, don't. Because guess what? And intimidated, but guess what? It's stomachache, I'm gonna help you out. You might as well get comfortable being uncomfortable, but, but guess what? The first set of people. That's gonna get irritated, imitated, offended and all that is blood family. So get ready. Your, your best cousin. Your tight, tight sister. Just get ready. This is the year of exposure, twenty twenty four, from the rich to the poor. Everything getting out, ain't no rock nobody can hide under, so don't even try it. Politicians, even the president, from the top to the bottom, everything getting exposed this year.
It is.
Keep living and watch what I'm telling you. And those of you that's in this spirit realm, you know exactly what I'm talking about. I ain't talking about the religious folk, because they gonna keep on trying to hold on to this, 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 this protocol, this, this learnt thing, this learnt behavior. When you in front of people, you gotta act like this, you gotta pray like this, you gotta do this, you gotta, okay, that's the religious folk, they make me itch. So y'all keep on holding, excuse me, y'all keep on holding on to that and watch what happened. That's gonna get exposed. Apostle Robin, Minister Rose?
Amen. I just wanted to concur about the repentance. You know, we gotta repent daily and, uh, what the Holy Spirit had, uh, laid on my heart, we can't deal with the things that we don't want to uncover. It's uncover season, uh, as well as exposure. And God sees it, he knows all anyway, so we, we can't hide anything from God, but he just wants us, you know, to repent and lay it out there. You know, because a lot of times, you know, sometimes we'll hold on and then not want to repent. And then, then that's when the devil just comes in and he can get a foothold, and we ain't trying to have the devil get no foothold. Amen.
Y'all should be sick of him. I'm talking, I'm even talking to the belief, oh, y'all, y'all should be just sick of the devil. I don't need, some of y'all hold to, y'all hold conversations with him and don't even realize it. Because when you start thinking on what his ideas is and not thinking on the word of God, you done gave him a foothold. You done partnered with him. If you listen to him, even through a person, and you know what the word of God said. You done gave him a foothold. You listening to him. Minister Rose, Brother Bud?
Amen, amen. With, um, minister, uh, well, not minister, Elder Isaiah was not.
Social media, we love her, that's just, we family, but she giving us all new identities.
Elder Marshall is what I'm, when he was talking, and he was talking about the good, it made me think about a young lady that, um. I used to babysit her and her brothers years ago, and now she, she say that she's ministering. And she was saying that how, um. Her family wish she would backslid or was dead. That's how they feel, and, and. That's how they feel. And, and exactly, it is true. Because for so long, they have been in, in the church, but the, the Christ wasn't in them.
There we go.
It is, it's sad because the whole family, and she exposing it up. And as well as I loved her grandmother, she's dead and gone now. I believe she was a hindrance to them because I knew, you know, some of the things that she was doing, but yet was claiming to be saved. Thank the Father, feel the Holy Ghost, and do speak with us, let the Spirit of the Lord give us. But, uh, now that her grandmother is gone, she's just flourishing and going on in the Lord. And then the family, she's exposing them, those that has been in the church for so long. And, and you know, I don't comment on everything that I see, but she, uh, you know, she posted, she said she don't know why her family. I know why, because you exposing them up. That's why they feel like that. Well, you know, she, she know, but she just don't want it, you know, that's family.
Some people don't wanna accept it, like, no.
Yeah, don't wanna accept it, but that's exactly what it is because they've been in the way. That's all it is, was hindrance. And, um, and then, you know, I hope none of them is watching this because I might get some backlash, but anyway.
We don't care, no. If you, if you watch this video, we don't care.
You need to come on out of it and listen to her. She, she ministering the Lord, then call her, and when she, you know, have, you know, got her ordination of minister, I congratulate on that. I told her that I, I was so elated and, um, and I loved her and I'm glad to see her, you know, blossom like that. But you know, it's sad when your own family members begin to dislike you. The devil won't, dislike you or, um, you know, just wish you was gone because of you doing what's right.
Pull your video down, son. We can't see you. Come and bring it. There you go.
Because you doing what's right. And it's sad that when God started exposing the good, you on a fly, flee because it's showing up your dirt. That like, and that's exactly what it is.
Amen. Like you said, when God exposes, first y'all might as well get ready, your first set of people. It ain't your neighbors, it ain't your co, it's your family first. Then, then it goes out. Brother Bud, then we gonna move on.
You know, ingredients when you're making something, cakes or whatever. And if you don't have the right ingredients and you use substitutes, amen? Yeah, when you use substitutes, it doesn't come out the way it's supposed to. You ain't got enough sugar. You ain't got enough, um, stuff to make the cake, you know, whatever it takes. The ingredients, by the power of the Holy Spirit, praise God. And, and knowing that persecution's coming, whether we wanna hear it or not, it's coming. You can feel it every day. Things are changing. The world is getting really to the point like, even if you went out on the street and you were sharing about Christ with somebody, you're gonna, you're gonna feel that persecution. You're gonna feel it. And if you don't have the right ingredients, at the time God's getting us ready now and preparing us, putting in the ingredients that we need, that we will not be able to stand, we will fall by the wayside. But God has given us this time, this day, this year, to be able to get it right and pray and seek God. And no matter what anybody thinks, self-righteous, call me whatever you want, it doesn't matter. It's because of what he has done. He's the one that did it. He's the one that gets the glory. He's the one, not me. I'm just dust. But he is Almighty God. He knows every thought that I think. He knows every intention of my heart before I even think it. He knows everything about me. So why would I not trust him daily on a day-to-day process? Amen. Praise God.
The devil scared of you. Devil scared. The, well, he got that devil spirit tiger by the tail at night. I better take these nuggets because this was gonna help you. If you don't believe nothing, no, Jesus coming back. Jesus is coming back. Are you gonna be ready? Let's go to the scripture again. For every wrongdoer, John 3:20. For every wrongdoer, for every wrongdoer, I'm gonna take each one, I'm gonna help you out, out there, just for social media, those who watch this later. Virtual classroom they can take from it too, for every wrongdoer hates the light. Every wrongdoer, those of you that practice doing wrong, you hate the light. And you do not, and does not come to the light, but shrinks from it for fear that its sinful worthless activities will be exposed and condemned. Absolutely, it's gonna be exposed and condemned. Those of you are deliberately doing things that you know God is not approved of and he's not pleased with. And some of you hypocrites out there that wanna put on a child of God uniform, but you dirty underneath and your heart is far from him, you're gonna get exposed because it clearly safe, because you hate the light. You're phony. Some of you work too hard. You, you work that mask suit. But you gonna be exposed. Those of you that doing things behind the scenes, trying to make people think it ain't you and you're trying to do it, you're backstabbing, you're lying on people, you're prof lying. Trying to get you working, trying to work people emotions to give and to believe in you instead of helping them to believe in God. When people see the God in you, you want them to keep seeing you. When people see the God in you, you supposed to point them to God. Instead, you keep pointing them to yourself. You getting ready, be exposed. Don't get nervous out there, social media, those that wanna view this video. Because I know this video travels worldwide. It's alright. Unless you repent. And unless you really strive to obey God and change your lifestyle. Because it's no way that you can live like a heathen and be holy. Ain't no such thing as a holy heathen. Let's get that right. Ain't nothing in the Bible about a holy lesbian. They don't even go together. Let's get, I don't even know where this going, but I'm going here, Holy Spirit. Ain't no such thing as a holy adulterer, a holy fornicator. Let's get it right. Ain't no such thing as a holy murderer, a holy backstabber. The words don't even go together. Don't, you can hear that and what I'm saying. A holy procrastinator, a holy liar. They don't even go together. A hu, a, a holy false prophet. They don't even go together. I'm just saying. Y'all better choose this day. And not only that, like, we can go back to what Elder Marshall said, and I don't wanna just hop on the bad, the deliberate, but the good. Some of you, God is trying, is trying to prick your spirit to use you because like Brother Bud said, which was, I love how he said it, there are ingredients in you. You got it all, you got it together, baby, but you don't even trust yourself to let God expose you out. So what you do is you'll put a mask to try to fit in with the world and then think that you can leak out the gift that way. Nah. That makes it, you done messed up the whole cake. You phony, damn. Ain't nobody gonna eat that. The cake stale. You stale. Some of you wondering how you're, you're fighting so much with people's spirits or the ministry or the, the souls that God trusts you with. Because you stale, you don't even trust the skin that you're in. You don't even trust yourself. You don't even believe in yourself and you don't believe in God like you say you do. You don't believe. You like saying those words out your mouth. I believe in God. I love the Lord. You don't even know what love is because you ain't spent time enough to love him and so that you can love yourself and then love others. You don't got this right. When you get this right, this'll be easy to do. Amen. Apostle Robin, Minister Rose?
Oh, Pastor, I was just saying, I think Prophet Sam had her hand up and wanted to say something earlier.
Oh, Prophet is saying, you're on.
Uh-oh. I hope her thing broken. We not gonna acknowledge the ir, the, the irritator that's trying to, you know. We ain't not in hell because he just mad about the word. Prophet is saying, once you fix your mute, then come back in. She might be having some difficulties. Let's move on for time's sake, but come on in if you can, if you get your Lord device working. Amen. Minister Rose?
Yes. Yeah, Brother Bud and you were speaking of that in, ingredient, and I really like that, Brother Bud, the ingredients. And a lot of times we can have the ingredients, but we, the proper ingredients, we know the word is the ingredients. And we can have, the Holy Spirit can be right there at our disposal. But because we decide not to use it, just like if you may be mixing up a cake and you got all the ingredients and then you decide, I don't wanna use the mixer today, I'm gonna use my hand. And then you, you mix that stuff up and it don't be mixed thoroughly. You see where some of them, they, they got air pockets of, of, of flour or whatever right there. That's why a lot of us in our spiritual, we got air pockets. You have the Holy Spirit, but you override, it tells us to yield to the Spirit. But you override that Holy Spirit. You don't use the Holy Spirit the way God wants you to use it. And that, and that's, you know, I think about too, a lot of times that we have gifts and they said gifts come without repentance. Those gifts are the right ingredients. Amen. We understand she having trouble with her phone.
Not a problem. As long as you can hear us, Prophet is saying, you know, we love you. It'll, that's gonna give you no problem soon. It's gonna open up because the devil just trying to silence you. We already know that. You know, this is the season. He don't like you, he don't like me. We don't care. That's why we irritate him now.
Yes, yes, yes.
Out of it too. And we gonna irritate him. Go ahead, Minister Rose.
Yeah, we can have all the proper ingredients that we need to be who God say we could be, but we make that decision, we make that choice. I don't wanna use this mixer today, speaking of the Holy Spirit. And we, we, we don't get the right results that we need to get it. We see it all the time too. Because we see that some pastors, you know that the Lord has used them in the past and everything. But then, uh, all of a sudden, they, I call them, they get the big head. They wants to, uh, work on their own intellect and get puffed up and, and pride because somebody then gave them a few accolades and all this kind of stuff and, and to praise them. And then they leave the God out and they don't move according to the Holy Spirit. And then you begin to see them fall. God has exposed all of they falling. They falling. This, we said, all the time, you decided you didn't wanna go by the lead of the Holy Spirit and God has lead you. So all them ingredients you had, you just, you got them right there with you, but you didn't wanna use your mixer, the Holy Spirit. Amen. So.
We go deeper with that at the Brother Bud.
You said exactly what I was gonna say. You took every word that I was thinking. I was sitting there thinking you can have. But if you sit there and stir it with a spoon or a beater and it says you gotta have a mixer about two, two minutes of mixing and you try to do it with a spoon or a spatula, it's gonna have bubbles and lumps and it's gonna come out flat in the oven. It's gonna fall flat. It's not gonna be that perfect cake that you make. And when you, when you, I just knew it, you was gonna say that. The mixer makes the difference and stirring it up and making it smooth when you pour it out. And then when you cook it, it's delicious. Praise God.
Y'all got the tiger by the tail now, but let's go deeper with that since we on this ingredients. The Holy Spirit is rocking with this one. Some of you out there, social media, God has given all of us everything you need. You got the ingredients. You got the bowl. You got the mixer. But the bowl, which holds the ingredient, is tainted. It's dirty. It may be cracked. So you trying to use the Holy Spirit or a spo, like the Holy Spirit represents the mixer. The spoon can represent either you or the devil. But hold up the vessel itself, which is you, could be dirty and tainted or cracked. And then yet you won't, you'll sit back and won't even ask for help. And so you appear trying to fix it yourself. Either you try to fake listening to the Holy Spirit, like, Holy Spirit, help me. Soon as he tell you what to do, you, oh, you, he already knows your heart. You gonna go off and do your thing anyway. And then you try to feed it. Then you wanna rush it into the oven, meaning rush it into the presence of the Lord, because remember the Lord is holy. So he's hot. He gotta be hot on fire. That's why we're soldiers on fire. We not soldiers on cold water. We ain't soldiers on no milk. We ain't soldiers on no, uh, uh, you know, we're soldiers on fire for Christ. So now when you're entering into the presence of the fire of God and you gotta cook that ingredient and it don't come out right, why? Why? See, you don't wanna go back and ask, first of all, the vessel ain't even right. And then some of you wanna cook your stuff in a nasty bowl. Don't even clean, ain't even clean. Because you, because, because you're thinking of yourself and you just gonna give the people anything. You appear stirring a fly or bug falling. You don't care. You don't even bother to give it out. Because you, you feel like, I don't feel like making the mixture again. Even though you got all the ingredients to give the, give the unadulterated, uncut word of God like no other to really let God manifest through using the vessel, but instead, uh, you know, a distraction or the enemy come in and you're mixing, you don't even bother to kick it out. You're mixing, you're, you're trying to, you're still stirring, just nasty. Throw the, throw the mixture in the, um, oven. Just because you see the top brown, you take it out. Then you get on your pulpit or whatever and serve your food to the people. And the cake, the cake go flat or don't eat, it ain't even always cooked through. You could still see the dough or the mixture in between, just nasty. And then you try to cover it up and try to say, oh, it ain't that bad. You stop like Minister Rose say, you stop, you, you start to compromise or you stop, you stop including God, making him inclusive. And so the gifts and all that God has put in you, people can't eat from you or receive or believe you because you don't even take the time to clean your utensils. You don't even take the time to clean yourself. You don't even take the time to prepare, to make sure that you have everything. To make sure that the food of God is served rightly to God's people. Because you stuck on self. But then you have a nerve to make a high demand when you go to other people's organizations or platforms or groups and want them to roll out the red carpet for you. But you don't even feed your own people right. Just nasty. Who wants to go to a dirty restaurant and eat off dirty foods and, I mean, dirty spoons and forks and plates? Jesus never served the apostles dirty food. He never, he never served and helped and, and healed those people with dirty hands. If anything, he made sure that the healing, whatever miracles he did was in right order and the receiver got it. He ain't do no halfway. Some of y'all sting halfway with your blessing. I'm just giving you a little bit. Because see, that's, that's for those of you who try to puff up yourself. Because you just, you rather tease people so they can keep coming back because like Minister Rose says, you want the accolades. God frowns on that. And guess what? You're gonna answer for it. Brother Bud?
Yes, I'd like to, since we're talking about cake ingredients and all the tools and everything. Yes, I'd like to, since we're talking about cake, ingredients, and all the tools and everything that we have. Then what we do is we put the icing on the cake, and we make it all pretty, pink or whatever you want. Put candles on it, but inside, the cake's not finished. And it, it looks nice, it smells nice, but when you go to cut it, like you said, that's when the realness comes out. That's when you really know what you're made of. When the time comes, and the pressure comes, it's coming, whether we see it in our state or wherever, it's coming throughout the world. It's spreading every day, we hear stuff, and it's happening, and people are letting it go, and say, it'll be okay, it'll be okay. Yeah, Nazism took over what, in one day? They just took over Poland or whatever they did, just in a couple days, and took the whole country, the Nazism did. So you know, it can happen, but what we have is what we better make sure that what's in us is really there, that it's really there. That way we will stand.
Yep, amen, don't be making up stuff, social media and virtual, don't be making up stuff, cuz some of you, you forming your mind and, and try to act like you got it, and you ain't got it. Some of you like, you know, I could, I'm, I'm, I'm a preacher, I'm a minister, and God is like, that's not what I put in you. You think cuz your grandmother and your father and them, they were preachers and pastors, oh, you just got it, no. And then some of you go out and do it the world where you go get all these degree, you, you getting all this man and world knowledge. But you only sitting here from God, and then you just tell yourself, oh, God called me to be a preacher or a minister or apostle or bishop and all, and all that, and God said, he'll tell you from the beginning. That ain't what I put in you from the time you was in your mother's womb. But since you, you just got the knowledge of it, but you ain't got the wisdom, the holy wisdom. And then some of you, when you get, you get to attract the spirits, meaning the people. And you wonder why it's such a fight to maintain the status, cuz we're seeing it now, how a lot of these leaders are just falling. Because they did it the world's way, serving God is not hard. And then as soon as you exposed, now you become a victim, how did you become a victim? How did you become a victim? When you deliberately knew, cuz you did it your way, you had it your way, you ain't have it God's way, Minister Rose?
Yes, um, and I was thinking about, like, we, since we on this cake mixing and all this. The Bible, the word of God is the recipe book. And a lot of times, we say that, oh, that ain't what it, 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 it mean, we don't have to do that. When the Bible tell us to put on the whole armor, we wanna put on half the armor.
Oh, you better see it.
We, when, when, when it tell us to put on the, the breastplate of righteousness, it is, uh, uh, it, we, we don't need to put that on, we gonna just put a half a cup instead of the, of the whole breastplate, a half a cup of milk here. So you know, a lot, and that's why our cakes are going flat, we wondering why our witness is, is going flat, because you not putting. You, yeah, you ain't, you ain't going by the recipe, the recipe told you to put off this and put on that. But you don't wanna put on this and put off that, you wanna do what makes you feel good, and you thinking that you supposed to be able to, to, to win somebody to Christ, and you, then you wondering what's going on? Why that, that this is not happening, and, and, and then all of a sudden, you gonna say, oh, that's just the devil, the devil gonna be the devil.
And devil, and sometimes the devil be looking, you say that, and he, he looking at you like.
Fuck something you doing.
Yep, you gave him an idea, you put my name in it? I, we wasn't even think, now that you gave me an idea, cuz I wasn't even thinking on them levels about you, but since you said it.
You wondering why everything going flat, but it's cuz that you are not following the recipe.
That's it, Minister Rose, ain't following the word of God. Some of you, she right about that, some of you, y'all go out here thinking y'all gonna fight demons, I'mma just put on my helmet of salvation and my shoes, my shoes of preparation, you know. I don't really need the breastplate, because see, reason why you don't want the breastplate, because the motive of your heart ain't right anyway, cuz you about crooked and deceiving the people anyway, just follow the recipe.
Say that pastor.
You know, just follow the Bible, your heart ain't right, so you don't put on a breastplate of righteousness. You put on a, you put on a breastplate of deceitfulness, you're putting on the breastplate of, uh, uh, help me, Holy Spirit, we gonna call them all out. The breastplate of lying all the time and pretending, but you ain't putting on no breastplate of righteousness. You ain't even got your helmet of salvation, or you up here putting on a hat, a hat of, a, a, a hat of offense. You ain't got no helmet, you putting on a hat, you can't fight no dang on war with no hat on, you need a helmet. Your shoes should be boots, lace stuff of preparation, meaning you should be prepared to know who you fighting, no, y'all wanna put on high heels so y'all can glide with the devil. Put on the red bottoms, there we go. Cuz the devil love red, put on his red bottoms, and you trying to go to war in some red bottoms, get outta here with that. Your sword, you ain't got no sword, a sword cut like a two-edged sword, I mean, you know, it cuts like a two-edge, it cuts two edges. Y'all just gonna go out there and get a little, get a little switch, that ain't hurt no devil. That's just gonna make him mad, a switch is gonna sting him, and now he like, I'mma really take you out. Some of y'all just lying, you know. Then when it come to the belt of truth, you ain't telling the truth, you got your belt of lies on though, that's holding you up, you put on them belt of lies, them pretend, the, the, the pretending belt. The offense belt, you putting on all them other belts. And then you go in front of people trying to say that you're holy, and you look a hot mess, your uniform don't even match. Don't even match. You say you got a sword of the word, yeah, pretending, but you got on a belt of lies, they don't even go together. You say you got on a helmet of salvation, but you got on a helmet of offense, cuz every time somebody say something, they'll try to give you constructive criticism, you get offended. And then you put on a breastplate of, you know, pretending, cuz you act like it don't hurt, but it's bothering the heck out of you, cuz you got on the wrong breastplate, don't know what you doing. And then you get mad with us, those that are striving and are truly spiritual, and this is a lifestyle for us, we ain't pretending. We ain't pretending. The pretend, see, when your eyes start opening up, and some of you, and it's, what's sad is that some of you are earth age, meaning over forty and fifty, but your decision making, you still act like a child. Your eyes ain't open up. Cuz some things y'all do by action, ain't no way in the world you should be doing at forty and over. Thirty and over at death. See, the teenage years and the, in the twenties are your dumb years, we all did some monkey stuff, we made monkey moves and did some dumb stuff. By thirty, you should be mature enough. Not only in the natural, but in the spiritual realm. But then some of y'all done screwed up your thirties too. Forty, God is least looking like, okay, they gotta calm down. But then, when he's looking at your heart, and then looking at the actions and what comes out of your heart, you ain't, you ain't get it, you ain't get the lesson yet. Forty years done gone by, but guess what, the Israelites proved it, cuz it took them forty years just to go to the promised land, cuz they was hard-headed and stiff-necked. Thinking they know it all, how the heck you gonna be forty years old walking in circles? I'm just saying. Brother Bud, and then I'mma close out, cuz we are.
I think she was saying, was trying to say something, is her phone working now? She had her hand up for a minute, then it went down.
I'm not sure, Prophet is saying, if you wanna jump in, jump in after Brother Bud, and then I'm gonna wrap up with final comments. Holy Spirit is almost done.
Yes, ma'am, I don't know if it's working or not, but.
Yeah, we can hear you, go for it.
The, I, I mean, Brother Bud, he touched on a lot, he even convicted me a little bit. But praise God, cuz you know, like you said, Pastor Vinnie, the truth will set you free every time. We all fall short, short of God's glory.
Yes.
But it's up to us to pick ourselves up and correct ourselves. You know, sometime I battle with myself, I'm, I'm a distraction to myself, cuz I know the truth gonna set me free, hallelujah. But even, even when y'all was talking about the case, that took me. You know, if you stomp through your house, or you make the wrong move, or you put a little less ingredients in the cake, it will fall, so. In other words, we all fall short, it's up to us to dust ourselves off. And that's simply is saying, God, please forgive me, I know I did something wrong, you know, but we won't even do that during the day. We won't even say, God, I'm sorry for the things I did wrong. God, I know knowingly and acknowledge what I've done to myself to put me in a position where I'm not following your directions, God. Just put me on the right path where I can follow you, and, and, and do it, do the things I supposed to do in Christ. That's all I had to say, y'all.
That was good, I was, and I'mma say with that, if we just follow Christ.
Yeah.
Your family gonna follow you, that's real talk. You gonna, and guess what, and I'm gonna help y'all social media, in the beginning, yes, it's just gonna be you by yourself, you gonna have, it's gonna be lonely season. You, ain't nobody gonna be listening to you, you gonna, your, your, your house gonna go haywire, when you really start walking with God. Everything gonna go haywire, you gonna have problems matching your clothes, you just, everything just gonna be a mess. Ain't nothing gonna go right when you start off walking with God, but if you keep pushing through that, you gonna notice yourself, you, you gonna notice your stamina with Him. You gonna notice your endurance, and next you know, people just gonna join in, oh, what you doing, like, actually, you know how, if one person, if, if, if one person yawned, and next you know, you see how everybody else start yawning? It's like contagious, that's, thank you, Holy Spirit, it's like, they contagious, you start walking with God, next you know, you're, you're walking. Speaking to your neighbors, how you doing, next you know, they gonna come right beside you, hey, where you going? Oh, I'm going with Jesus, where y'all going at? Oh, we going down this road, come on, let's talk about it, let me tell you what, um, what he said. Then, next you know, somebody else see y'all, y'all, y'all waving, I want y'all to get that picture, and, cuz, but look at it in the spiritual realm. And they like, hey, I know you, we used to go to school together, yeah, we did, how you doing? Where you going? Oh, I'm following Jesus, where y'all going at? Oh, me, Jesus, and, you know, and, and let me introduce you to my, my friends, sister so and so. We, we going, we going this way, come on, if you got some time, come on, go with us down this road. Next you know, they come, then if you stop for a minute, when y'all rest, you gonna realize that, wow, look what God did. All cuz you been yourself, you not pretending, you ain't messed up the ingredients. Even though within that walk, sometimes we wanna deviate, and yes, we get distracted, cuz I, I'm the same way, sometimes, I'm a, I can be, get caught up in myself. I'm, I can be a detrimental to myself. But praise be to the Lord, that I've learned, and He allowed me to make my fault, I, all my stumbles, I fell in the presence of Him for and repented. All, you know, like you say, you have to repent every day, just open up and give all your flaws to Him. Tell Him, no, I'm just mad, okay, you got the mad spirit, everything make you mad. Trust me, He gonna work that off for you, next you know, one day, you just gonna be thinking, dang, I ain't mad today at nothing. The TV working right, ain't nobody bothering me, the kids are good today. My wife, she doing, I don't have nothing to be mad about. God will work that out of you, and then He'll start talking to you, cuz it wasn't no use for you being mad or just having that spirit of just being angry and mad for no reason. And some of y'all did, a lot of us did, just be mad for no reason. And then when somebody asks you, why you mad, then you gotta sit there and think of something. Well, things ain't go right at work today, uh, that was five hours ago, you been home for five hours now, why is you talking about work? The car was acting up, that was two hours ago, but you still, you was able to fix the flat tire. Amen, Brother Bud, and then wrap it up.
Yeah, like I said, like I said, I can't emphasize enough of what I've been feeling in my spirit about what's coming upon the earth. Okay, all over the globe, and the thing is, it's like, what was it, Peter and Paul, they, uh, said, what was it? Somebody was trying to cast out a demon, and they said, we know who Peter, we knew who Paul is, but who are you? You know, the person was trying to cast out that demon.
Apostle, that was about the seven sons of Skeever, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's what it was.
And tore him all to pieces, yeah.
They beat him out of clothes, beat him naked, cuz they up here trying, up here trying to cast out demons, what they was doing, they was trying to buy the gift, you can't buy the gift.
Authority to do it.
You ain't even serve God. So see, some of you who pretend to be a child of God, you ain't, you ain't even, you're not a child, you ain't receive salvation. And you either wanna try to buy the gift from one of his children, or you'll sit by and watch, and then go home and be in the mirror imitating.
Come on.
Come up, you gonna get beat up.
Imitating, yep, be real, be real.
Beat up bad. Don't be imitating, and hold up, not just in the spirit realm, but period, some of you be imitating other leaders, you wanna be like them, sound like them, preach like them, teach like them. Don't be standing in the mirror imitating, see, that means that you don't have a clear picture when you look at yourself of who you are and who you are in Christ.
Praise God.
I just love Apostle so and so. Apostle Reverend Neckbone, he be preaching that word, I'm telling you. I love it, I'mma be in the mirror, hallelujah, shucka, 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 shucka. Hallelujah, shucka, 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 and then when you go preach, yeah, praise the Lord, everybody, hallelujah, and people like, why you sound like Reverend Neckbone? I'm just saying. I know some of y'all don't like that, cuz I'm in your privacy now, God show him, cuz he be, he be in the bathroom with y'all. He CEO.
Yeah.
You up here, yeah, you know, if I could just preach like that, I'mma win many souls, if I could just be like Reverend Neckbone, I tell you. Cuz I like his style, I like, I'm, I like Sister Susan, uh, or, you know, Apostle Susan, you know, Ramsey style, that woman, I tell you. And some of y'all, all y'all life, be in the pulpit imitating. Never duplicating the word of God, one of y'all says, some of y'all been in church all your life, and church ain't in you, cuz you don't know nothing about it.
Amen.
Been in church all your life, but the word ain't get in, but people are getting in though. You let the pastor and the leaders manipulate the word to get in to control you. And you never have that experience, that Holy Spirit, that, just when you in the presence of the Lord for just five minutes. Your whole life, all your troubles gonna vanish if you truly let them fall off, and you open up your heart and repent and ask for forgiveness. And tell God, you know, I, I know what I did today. And I, I know I was wrong, and I enjoy doing it, I, I was, I enjoy socking it to that person. But I know, God, that you was not pleased, forgive me. And if the Holy Spirit says, go back and apologize and make that right. Even if the person don't receive, they'll forgive you, the point is, it is off your hands. Cuz then we'll say, well, God, what if I apologize and they don't accept my apology? God gonna tell you, that's not your business, do what I tell you to do, it becomes my business, I hold every heart in my hand. I can turn every heart the way I want it, because sometimes, and then thank you, Holy Spirit, this is a pearl for you. Sometimes, when we deal with complicated people, and sometimes, even when you're wrong, and God tells you to go and apologize, and God turns the heart of that person against you instead of receiving it. Don't be upset, because that's a part of you, that's a part of the growth of you, that could be a part of your elevation at that moment. Where He will turn the heart of that person instead of saying, receiving, they be like, no, I'm mad with you, I don't wanna be your friend no more. You know what, it may hurt and be disappointing, but good, that was for your good. Because where one drop off, later on, God will replace something better. But the point is, you did your best to apologize to mend it, but if it don't mend back together, don't you get upset and don't be chasing down behind folks. Cuz some of you hold on to things tightly. And some of y'all mend you, oh, y'all will ride a car down to the rim. Y'all did is, is clicking and clicking and clicking, and you up here still trying to put the wires together when, here it is, God done blessed you financially to get another car, no, you won't ride that thing till the wheels fall off. And God is like, let it go. Cuz it's like a idol. You more into that. And that's why some of you have a problem in the spirit realm of letting things go. You harvest the hate and deceit against people. Just mean. You hold on to that meanness. And that thing is festering and building up in you like a cancer. And then you wonder why you can't be effective in your witness or your talk and your walk with people. Because you got a spiritual cancer in your dang on mouth. You got a spiritual cancer in your mind. You can't think right. So then you'll start pretending, I'm okay. All is well. When those of us can really see, you are dying inside. You need to get set free. You need to repent and get washed and get cleaned up and ask God to straighten out your life again. Brother Bud, and then I'm gonna close us out in prayer.
Yeah, I'd like to say, when you said about turning the heart, turning the heart around, you know, God told, uh, Moses that he was gonna harden Pharaoh's heart. Now, you're gonna go to that guy when you know God told you, I'm gonna harden his heart? And you're still gonna go there? I think God would've been scared to death. And you why you harden his heart?
But, but see, why read, when you look at it from the spiritual sense, he warned him. That was a warning.
Yeah.
For him to prepare his flesh, that you're not gonna get what you want. You want Pharaoh to let the people go. In this season, I'm not gonna let him let him go. Because you know why? At that time, the Israelites was not spiritually ready to go through the Red Sea. They weren't ready.
Yeah, okay.
So he said, I'm telling you now, just obey me. Go ask him. So it could be proof in the natural that you came to ask him to, so that the people could know that you have tried many times to get us freed. And Pharaoh said no. But really, God turned his heart to say no. But see, the people, they were in their flesh, the Israelites. Because if they would've seen spiritually that this was a test for them to get it right, cuz to get them prepared so that they can get unified. That's what God was waiting for, for the unity. Cuz once they was unified, and after that last placacy, God had to show himself too cuz Pharaoh thought Moses and his God was a joke. He said that our army bigger than them. He can say what he wanna say. We can still chase after them and capture them. Where about they God? So that's why he had to do them plagues.
Yeah, I got you.
And he, when it got to the last plague.
Yeah.
Pharaoh was like, God knew his heart. Enough is enough. These people ain't even worth for all this crap. That's when God let his heart go because he had to hold it or turn it no more. And then he believed that, guess what? We, I believe that your God exists. That's why I'm letting him go. He ain't really say them words, but you can see by his actions.
Yeah, I got it.
Look, tell him, stop this. Cuz it wasn't Moses. He was like, tell your God, stop this. We got rain, we got dang on frogs jumping out the dang on pool. We gotta put, the whole river's blood. Open up and stinking. And now all of a sudden, all my firstborn and even my child is dead. Just tell him, stop.
Wow.
All right, y'all can go. Get the heck out of here. But because Pharaoh has still a streak of stubbornness cuz his makeup, he was still a king. So that, that authority, control kicked in, and then he tried to go after him. By the time he went after the people, they was at the part of the Red Sea.
Praise God. Amen. I like that. I always wondered about that. Why, you know, why would you go if it's hard? It's already hard. Cuz the people aren't ready.
And that's what God will tell y'all. When you have to fail, he'll tell you, go apologize. Well, she treated me bad. Just say you apologize, be humble and ask for forgiveness. Why should I ask for forgiveness for something I didn't do? Cuz I've did, I've, oh, I had that fight with God many a time. God said, and guess what? I'm not gonna make, I'm not gonna give, I'm not gonna allow them to say the words that your flesh wanna hear. I forgive you. We cool like that again? No. Cuz see, that's your flesh being fed, but the spirit, but the spirit in you has not grown because your spirit would be easy to compromise if your flesh get fed all the time. Then you won't know how to feed your flesh to, I mean, feed your spirit to grow because you are compromised and you're so quick to just cuz you don't wanna face tribulation, you'll just surrender. And that mean, some of you will surrender God. You'll try to return God over to the devil.
Yeah.
That's it. Some of y'all will do that. Y'all sellouts. Cuz some of y'all don't think God arm is strong enough, social media. Oh, oh, the book, the Bible nice. But right now, I need this money. I mean, the organization is just saying, I gotta say this and act like this and get a, I mean, this one, really, you know. But right now, you're a sellout.
Wow. Praise God.
And God will deal with it. Don't get scared. God's, and guess what? He love you cuz you have the opportunity to change. Amen. So we are done. God is good. He's up. He's getting ready to move out. He's getting ready to deal with us. He still will find us. You know, he's, he's enjoying, he's definitely enjoying this stuff cuz I ain't see us about, boy, now I'mma look at cake differently. I'mma look at cake differently. I, I told you, I, we was all, what did I tell you, Brother Bud? We only had one scripture. And I, look, and my notes. We ain't did none of them. So that's gonna be next, none of them. We talking about cake. And it was a powerful, it's a lot of powerful spiritual tools if you listen about the cake and some ingredients between Brother Bud and Minister Rose. I'm saying, you don't get this and apply this to your life according to the scripture, John, John three twenty.
Yeah.
I'm telling you, when Jesus come back, it's gonna be a sad day cuz some of y'all gonna miss it. Y'all gonna get left behind. Guess what? If you get left behind, it's not gonna be nobody fault but yours.
Yes, that's right. I accept that. I accept that.
So the, so those of you, everyone gets a season. And most of God's people seasons that I'm seeing now that are, that have been waiting patiently and walking with God. Even though this is the year of exposure, that's exposure on you too for the good.
Praise Jesus.
You, it's time for you to accept it. Stop being afraid to let the goodness of the Lord in you show. Stop trying to compromise it to fit in. Stop trying to cover it up. You are faith, you, you, you deserve this spotlight of God. You've earned it. Wear it proudly.
Praise Jesus.
You see, you see the devil don't have no problem wearing his title. That what he do. He is, he is proud of his little nasty title. Lucifer is Satan. He's a, he's proud of that. You should be proud to be a child of God.
Praise God.
So always ponder on. Cuz if you are a child of God and you are called, why are my people? That's what God sitting up there wondering. Why are my people who are called by my name
ashamed?
Afraid of being exposed. You're called by God's name. You ain't called by, by no devils.
Praise God.
But why are you afraid? If God is for you, then who can be against you?
Amen. Amen. Amen.
Some of y'all, y'all take that, y'all take that scripture too light. That's, that's a lot of meat in that scripture. If God, you can lose everything, but if, and see, y'all think everything, when some people say about losing everything, it's materialistic. No. E- even if you forfeit, if, if everybody walk away, if God is still for you in the midst of all.
Yeah.
Who can be against you?
Like Job, for instance. Job was a good example.
Yes, Job, the, the trials of Job.
Imagine that.
God is.
Hallelujah.
You think he chased, Job ain't even chased after his wife when she said, just kill yourself and die. You must do something.
Yep, you're right.
He's like, go ahead.
Quite, cuz I'm quite sure he human. He probably looked at her like, what?
You turn against me? Wow.
Yeah, I'm your husband. You gonna tell me, kill myself? I thought you love me. I mean, watch me, and then one more little pearl, and I gotta pray cuz I feel him, that he, he done, God is ready to move. He ready to deal with us behind the scenes. Y'all better watch these people. Some of y'all, single men, single women, and those of you even in relationships. Y'all better screen these people's spirits, even as friends. Y'all better screen their spirits. And please watch how you use the three words, I love you. Even in a sentence, you better watch it. Even with people and family, watch how you use those words. When you talking to someone, even in encouragement, you better be prepared to look at their spirits. As a pastor, I see so many spirits on people cuz that's what the Bible says. You're fighting against the spirit. You're not fighting against flesh and blood. We're fighting against spirits and the principalities and the stuff that's in people. And sometimes the word, I love you, can change a person. It can make them or it can break them.
Yeah, you're right.
You say, I love you, and your actions is far from it. That person gonna break you. That spirit gonna tear you down. That spirit can kill you. Watch those three words this year. Don't be saying, I love you loosely and don't mean it. Cuz I love you comes, it's an action word and it comes with attachments to it. Not even to a child. You ain't gonna tell a child you love them and don't show them. Cuz you know kids will hold you accountable.
Oh, yes.
That's why God said they will be the first to enter in. Some of you don't even hold yourself accountable for stuff. That's why people get to walk all over top of you and do what they wanna do to you cuz you don't, you just be letting them do what they, you let all the spirits in them just run all around you, all up in your house, do what they wanna do.
Wow.
Eat up your food, sleeping on your couch, all in your bathroom, dispersed. They just do what they wanna do.
Wow.
Eyes people, so you can see all the wonderful things in God's law, but make sure you turn your eyes from worthless things so that he can preserve your life according to his word. That's Psalms one nineteen eighteen and, and verse thirty seven. Amen. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, you are so amazing. We thank you, Lord God. Boy, you know, God, the cake, it gave me a new revelation. The ingredients. And Lord, what has been shared today, I thank you, Lord God, for everyone in the virtual classroom and those that will view this recording later. And Lord, continue to keep your hand of favor across everyone in the virtual classrooms life. Lord God, I decree and declare from the top of their head that they are whole, they are blessed, they are healed, they are prosperous. They gonna have a new mind starting today. Old things are gonna pass away and all things are gonna become new. And Lord, cuz if you give us tomorrow, we wanna be better than we was the day before. So Lord, I thank you and I decree and declare in your name that any of the, anything that was said today and given will not fall on deaf ears. It's gonna hit the right spirit and grow the people up and be, and help them to be accountable for everything that they say, think, and do, and give respect to you. Some of them don't even show you respect. God, forgive them. Some people are doing deliberate things and they know that you're in the presence and they're not even showing you respect. Forgive them. Forgive even some of the young peoples, and you know, not even talking about the, but some young people that I believe is they are disrespectful. If they are being disrespectful in seniors' presence, that's being disrespectful in your presence. Forgive them for they not know what they say or do. Holy Spirit, I need you to go across this earth and preach the spirit of all of us, Lord God, in areas that we need to grow up on and to surrender unto you. So until you bring us together again, Lord God, we honor you and we praise you and we thank you that you woke us up. We thank you that for every day that you've given us in this year of twenty twenty four. We're at March sixteenth, three months in. We thank you cuz many ain't making it. Many are not making it. And we don't know if we gonna wake up tomorrow. That's if you give us tomorrow. But we're gonna trust you no matter what day you give us. We trust you with everything. And Lord, we repent at your feet daily. We wanna be made whole. We wanna be made new. We wanna be all what you created us to be and not what man or people think that we should be. So Lord, I want you to enter, enter the homes, enter, enter the minds and the hearts of everyone under the sound of my voice and those that will view this video later and give them a clear view of who they are and whose they are. And show them, Lord God, give them a clear view of the path that they need to be on. Some people, uh, need to, they are on the broad road. They need to get off that broad road and get on that narrow road that is already laid out for their life. So we honor you and we thank you for being with us this night. I thank you, Holy Spirit, for all that you've done and you do and you continue to do in and through us. And thank you for keeping us together and strengthening the unity amongst us. And help us to continue to strengthen the unity amongst us.
Praise God.
Keeping, um, keeping each other lifted up. Keeping each other, you know, holding each other's hand, making sure that no one gets left behind. We thank you, we love you, and we honor you.
Lord.
Thank you for your grace and your mercy and your love and your faithfulness and help us each day to have grace and mercy and love and faithfulness for one another.
Yes.
And we give you all the glory, all the honor and all the praise for it now. In Jesus mighty and awesome name. And everyone say amen.
Wow, praise God, amen.